It's November 19th, time for the regular board meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call will show that all commissioners are present today. The first item we have on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Board members and staff, are there any changes to the agenda? No? Look for a motion then to approve the agenda.
I'll move.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
Second.
Commissioner Notch, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. The next item we have is public forum. Anyone wishing to speak this morning at the public forum? Anybody wishing to speak at the public forum? Okay, last chance. Okay, we'll move on. Board members, before you, you have the consent agenda. We have items one through eight. Are there any issues that board members would like to pull for further discussion or any other reason? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda, items one through eight.
I'll move that.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer, Commissioner Clark, second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion passes. We'll move right on.
I was just gonna ask a quick question.
What? Oh, you gotta, okay.
Yeah, he didn't know it was loaded.
And it's more just a comment. You know, replacing that phone system, it's gotta be a challenge with all the different buildings and facilities, huh? Isn't it, wasn't that one of the things in here was looking at doing something with the phone?
Oh, phone, I thought you said voting system.
Oh, then I'd be looking at Randy over here.
Yeah, they wouldn't know either.
Yes, that is the last project.
That's gotta be a challenge.
It is, it is. But our staff did a very thorough RFI process first, I think, and then honed that in with a with a more of an RFP, and I think we're on a path to a system that'll take us into the future.
Okay, good. All right. So then, now we'll move on to the public hearing. We have a public hearing on the capital improvement plan.
I'm Randy Schreifel of Sterns County, out of Hickory, Tennessee. I'm Dr. Williams, the county's finance director. And we're gonna go over the county's capital improvement plan. The agenda will, first we'll talk about the timeline and the goals of the capital improvement plan, a brief review of the current CIP, the projects, where we are with the debt and bonding currently, looking at the future debt service plan, and then, of course, we need to hold a public hearing, and then we have a request for board action. So the timeline of the capital improvement plan, this has been worked on, obviously, for many months. The projects were presented to you back in June. Since then, we've been working on the financing plan, and that's what we'll be going over today. Is anticipated in the future to do this more on an annual basis to keep the plan fresh. And it is a plan, so it is subject to change. You know, prices obviously change, projects may come and go also, so. So the goal of the CIP is to get input and feedback from the public, also have a strategic plan for our long-term capital needs. The capital improvement plan needs to be a five-year plan at minimum. We, of course, looked out longer than five years, but this, today, will focus on the five years, and then also the financing plan, which we'll go into some depth today. So since June, there's been a few changes. You've got a memo on these changes, but I'll go over them briefly here. The service center expansion. The first bond's gonna help pay for finishing off that project. The Richmond shop parking lot and the Belgrade shop fence, originally, we were gonna have those paid for by a bond, but we're gonna be looking at the highway fund balance to pay for those. Administrative center remodel, the price, the estimate has increased to 3.5 million on that project. And then we also added the Parkland acquisition for a million dollars. Now, just because that's in there doesn't mean that the board is required to do that, but if it's not in there, then you cannot do it, so unless you amend the plan. So it's a placeholder, obviously, that'll come back to the board anytime you buy anything, real estate that comes to the board. The project timelines, again, this is a five-year plan with a lot of costs. You see in 2024, that's a very big number. That's for law enforcement center in the jail, and that's really about half of the cost of that project. But the funding for this plan, the next bond, will pay for some of the planning and looking at that. So again, you're not authorizing that, but you have a placeholder to be able to study that and look at that in the future, so.
Randy, let me interrupt at that point. So then, where are we with that plan? I know, I know we've talked about some generalities. Is that where we are pretty much?
Well, I guess I'll let Mike handle that.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we're really, at the very beginning, we haven't done any planning, other than looking back to the plans that were previously previously done and said that we were gonna need to be building or rebuilding in the near future now. So back when we did the remodeling, there was a projection that we would be needing to do these capital projects in the near future.
Okay, and I think we were, so we're at the 10,000-foot level?
Yeah.
Okay, and we're looking, but we're still looking at downtown as far as our plans were, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So the first, the first bond that we're looking at will cover the first two years of expenses, and part of that is to hire somebody to help look at and help us study the jail and the future of that. There's a question on our debts and our bonding and where we are currently. This is, shows the debt payments over the last 10 years. 2016, we did have a refunding, so there you kinda show a double up of payments. You're getting proceeds from the new bond, and then you're paying off the old one, so that wasn't, you know, like a levy expense didn't go up that much. It's just proceeds from the old bond, and then paying off two bonds is why that's showing up more. So typically, interest costs have ranged anywhere from 342,000 to almost 700,000 a year, and rates around 2% to 4%.
Randy, could you, how much interest did we pay last year?
Last year was about $456,000.
We paid $456,000 taxpayer money just in interest?
Right, which is about 0.5% of our county's total levy.
Okay, the next slide goes over where we are with our current bonds. We have four of them outstanding right now. Two will be paid off in 2020, and one will be paid off in 2022, and then the 2018 bond will be paid off in 2023. So our debt service will go down from 1 million, excuse me, from 4 million to about 1 million. And this is, of course, assuming no new debt, so this is where we are currently with the existing debt. I'm gonna turn it over to Sharon a little bit, but this is taking those two graphs and putting them together, just kinda showing where we are and where we're going with the existing debt.
Sharon?
Quick question, just because it relates to where we're at. I just said something to Dr. Williams. Could you tell us what our interest rates are that we're paying right now? So when we're talking about the amount per year, what's the interest rate? Or the range of interest rates?
It's the 2% to 4%, and I think at the new bond that we're looking at doing, it's gonna be about a seven-year bond, and about 2.5% is where we are. You know, the payments vary, the early payments are gonna be lower, and then as you go out further, they're a little bit higher, so on average, it'll be 2% to 2.5%.
Randy, do we have a, we have a cash reserve as well, though, correct?
We do.
And of which we're collecting funds from that cash reserve, are we not?
We are, yes. We, and our budget is interest earnings.
Okay, so now, the money that we are borrowing can also be offset, though, by the money that we're making, though, correct, on the reserve, correct?
Sure.
If you wanted to talk in generalities about money and under which kettle it's in, and so, and what's our earnings on our funds?
Where the last couple of years, where interest rates have been favorable, we've been at about $2 million in interest earnings.
Okay, all right.
You wanna move over how we compare?
All right, this slide here, I thought I'd put together to show how do we compare to other counties in the state of Minnesota? And so off to the left side, I talk about our ranking in relation to all 87 counties. And when you look at all 87 counties, and this is as 2017, Sterns County was ranked 14th lowest in debt per capita. There were 11 counties that were debt-free, and then there were two counties that had less debt than us to get us into 14th place. So of the 13 counties with less debt per capita, only one has a population that's higher than our population, so, and that would be Dakota County. I have that over to the right comparison on how we rank in comparison to the MICA counties, and that's as of 2018, a little more current data to show that we are second in that ranking behind Dakota County. So now we'd like to take a little bit of time to talk about the future.
Sarah, could you go back to that last slide, please? So Dakota County has no debt per capita?
Right.
Could you expand on that?
I did email their finance director asking if they could walk me through that, and I haven't heard back from them yet. As to how that, how that happened and what facilities they have that are newer.
Well, that would indicate they have no debt.
Right, right.
Okay.
And Sarah, just with that, I'm guessing you asked this, you know, where are they at with planning for future needs?
Right.
And if they are able to do it in a way to remain debt-free, or if it's, you know, kind of, what's their strategy? So it'd be interesting to hear that when you hear back.
I know their finance director's fairly new as well, but I'm hoping the history is still known on that. Okay, so here's where there gets to be a lot of numbers and not so many graphs, so I will try to go through this as good a detail as I can. This here talks about the project costs that are to be funded by something other than grants or outside funding. So these costs are captured in your capital improvement plan on the, I think it's your packet pages 53 and 64 for facilities and parks. And this is a per-year look at how much the funding is needed for the projects that are in the plan. Now below, I have a proposed funding source. As a budget committee, we talked about how to spend that $6 million in reserves that we recently asked to have transferred out of the general fund, and so I have a fund balance funded column, or row, I should say, at the bottom, that talks about where the, where that $6 million would be spread amongst, compared to the bonding, which we're looking at on the top row. Now today, we're talking about the 2020 and the near-term bond, because, of course, we plan to bring this, this plan back every year and re-talk about that. But I wanted to show the longer-term vision so that, so that we all understood what we were thinking of, should the projects continue as planned. Here's the financing plan that takes into account the numbers from the previous one, and it talks about those bonds. So up top, I have the existing debt payments across the top, then I have the 2020 proposed bond that we, that we would like to talk about today, and we are looking to do that over a seven-year timeframe in order to condense the payments for when, for if and when we decide to get out future financing for some of these other larger projects later. So in doing that, I have a proposed debt payment column throughout the middle that shows that the, the plan of the budget committee was to try to keep that debt service payments as level as possible over time, so that you're not impacting the levy largely in any one year, so the taxpayers aren't feeling a large increase in any one specific year. If you go down all the way to the bottom, I have your overall county levy impact. So based on the, the needs we would have to have from the levy to make these payments, the dollar increase from one year to the next, you'll see I start out with about 148,000, and in the year of, of the large bond issue, I have it going up 260,000, but it stays at about 2.2% to 0.3% of the overall county's levy would be the impact of these decisions.
So you've seen some counties, when they do a new law enforcement center or something, have a big jump in their levy. We're trying to minimize that and try to thave that in over a longer period of time.
So what this looks like in a graphical format is I took all those numbers from the previous, previous slide, and I put it into a picture format, so you could see that orange line there is the levy, so you can see, the debt service levy. So you can see the debt service levy does increase slowly over time, but that blue levy is our proposed payments. So for a while in 2021 and 2022, we'll be levying more than what's needed in order to help for the years where our debt service payments get larger, when we do have a large bonding issue in the future.
Good. So you're going to be putting money aside for the future, is what it's saying?
Yeah.
And the state won't penalize you for having more money aside?
No. In the debt service fund, you know, you need to have at least 105% of what you're gonna pay in the future, need to levy. So you can have excess there, but you can't have, and it's not gonna sit in the general fund, it's gonna sit in the debt service fund.
Okay, what's the instance, I've been told that if you have money, if you overtax, have money set aside, that the state penalizes you then?
Are you talking about the state auditor's recommendations that we, where we just transferred some money out, 'cause we talked about how we had some excess reserves that we wanted to use?
Not sure exactly, but I was discussing retiring county debt, and I was told that if you do that, the state's gonna penalize you for overtaxing and have money set aside by administration, and have money set aside for future buildings or whatever needs repair.
No, I don't think there's a penalty for that. Obviously, you know, if you have high, high fund balance and you have a plan for it, that's one thing. If you don't have a plan for it right, then you have to look at, are you overtaxing people?
So if you, as long as you have a plan that you can justify, you should be okay?
Yeah, and then there's not, you know, the state doesn't have a formula saying, "We're gonna take this much aid because you have this much fund balance." That's not part of it, no. It's just, the state auditor looks at that every year just to see you're within their recommended range. If you're over that range and you have a reason, I think you're fine, but they're mainly looking at the operating funds, so the general fund, highway, and human services. Debt service, you know, the plan is to build that up to help level off that debt service in the future, when we do have the big, you know, jail one, if that comes about. There's no penalty for that.
Okay, thank you.
So then, Sarah, they just expound on your graph there. So there's a few years where the levy is higher, but then there's also a number of years in there where the levy is here, and you're actually using excess at that point. So it's not like we're jumping the levy up in order to capture those peaks, we're actually using fund balance to keep that peak from happening.
So, I'm sure, so somewhat, we're, we're, we're doing some savings, like, was it just last meeting, we transferred the $6 million? So we're using some money that we have in our hands, we're gonna raise a little bit more, so it's a combination of kind of saving a little bit, but also incurring the debt. So the, the interesting policy discussion I think I'm hearing here is, could we be debt-free? And there's some arguments that, yes, well, they're a good argument, financially, that would make some sense, but public policy-wise, it's questionable, because then if you try to be debt-free, you're gonna be raising all those money for those large projects before you actually build them, and so those that are using them or benefiting them end up not really paying necessarily. So that's kind of the public policy discussion behind it. And not only that, but of course, it helps us level the, level the debt levy. If you had large projects, you could end up with a spiking tax levy unless you had a really sound financial plan for all those types of projects. So it's kind of pay as you use or pay as you go is part of the question, too.
I was gonna say, if you wanna do the projects in the timeline you have, we have to issue debt. I mean, there's, otherwise, you're gonna have to put things way out, and you know, the jail may not be able to.
Well, you know, to do debt-free and keep doing what we need to do would take many years of good planning to accomplish that.
Right.
But a plan could be made to do that.
Certainly, a plan could be done to do that, yes. I mean, it would be. Whether or not that's good public policy, you know, the opinion is board on that, it would make a difference, because we would need to have direction to do that, because it would be a long-term plan.
So, I mean, it'd be the same as paying cash for a house opposed to
Exactly.
getting a loan and a mortgage, yeah?
Exactly.
So then, Sarah, Randy, just, and I don't know if you kind of figured this out and pulled it back, do you know what the, the per capita would be at the high point? Did you run that by chance?
I did calculate where we would be at, assuming no other county issues any debt, and it, I didn't include the jail one in there. I went up to the jail, and it would only drop us two rankings in the MICA counties. By the time we issued the jail one, we would, we would be more in the middle of that.
Any other county may issue debt, too, in that time period, right?
I just wanna comment, too. I understand, you know, when you make plans for capital, especially like the service center and the jail, is you don't wanna underbuild, because then you make a project, and then shortly, you've realized that you're short. And so oftentimes, yeah, the debt can be a good thing, because it saves you money in the long run and over the years as well, so, just a comment.
The recommendations of the budget committee, I thought I would lay out here, were recommending the approval of the approval of the capital improvement plan as presented with the understanding that the study will be performed relating to the potential future parking ramp and LEC. We will have a new CIP and that will, again, go before a public hearing in 2020. That will be revised to reflect, you know, new information that we learn in the next year relating to those larger projects. We also are recommending issuance of a CIP bond in 2020 in order to finance the remaining service center expansion, admin center remodel, and a few other facilities and parks projects that were listed within there. That does include an additional resolution that you may have seen in your items that talks about a reimbursement resolution that allows us to start incurring costs now before we get our bond proceeds. So, our action request would be first to hold a public hearing and then to go through the things that I, that I just mentioned for approval.
Okay. So, we're looking for a series of motions?
Well, one quick.
We have a public hearing.
Oh, yeah, we got a public hearing first. One quick comment, how much, or question, I guess, besides the facility buildings here, do we own any open spaces downtown? You know, like there's that parking lot west of the law enforcement, this one right here. Are they all owned by somebody else?
No, some of the park, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, some of the parking lots are ours and, for example, am I pointing the right way? That lot is mostly owned by the city. But no, we don't, we don't lease any of that parking around us other than that or use any.
Well, across the street in that direction, we, we own that.
Yeah, we own that.
We own that lot.
There's plenty of county employees that park in some of the parking lots a little further out, but, but those are private, privately owned and the employee is paying those, those property owners on their own.
Okay. So, do one west of the law enforcement center is owned by somebody else?
Yes.
Okay.
Then we'll go ahead and I'll open the public hearing to consider the adoption of the capital improvement plan. Anybody wishing to speak on the adoption of the capital improvement plan? Anybody wishing to speak on the capital improvement plan? Last chance. Okay, I'll close that public hearing.
Mr. Chair.
No written comments or any comments that we got either.
I saw Mr. Hamus wince when I said that west parking lot, but I guess part of it, some of that is owned by the county and some is owned by the law office there too.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Okay. All right. Randy, then we have a series of motions, correct?
Correct. The first, you can do all three of them or you can do one by one. The CIP need, would need to be approved. We're looking to issue the bonds in 2020 for those projects that were mentioned, the ones in the short term, and then that advanced funding resolution.
Could you, or would you, what are the 2020 projects again, Randy?
The main one is to finish off the service center and remodel of the downtown here. And then, then a couple other miscellaneous small ones.
And, and the total of the bond would be?
We're looking at seven and a half to eight million, somewhere between that.
And included in that is, is money to begin the planning process for.
Could we, could we separate these?
Let's, let's take them, yeah, I, I agree. Let's take them one at a time. First of all, the resolution to adopt the improvement plan. Okay, could I have a motion?
Commissioner Clark?
Which one?
Capital Improvement Plan.
The whole thing?
Yes.
The draft.
The, the, what we just had presented.
Because that one I had to issue, so.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. Commissioner Notch, a second? Okay, discussion?
Well, I think there are some things in there that just, we don't need in there. For instance, setting a million dollars aside to buy more parkland and then you go through this whole thing and we're having trouble keeping track of what we have and keeping that up. And then there are some parks that every time I drive by them, I look, I'm going to see how crowded they are today. And I look over, oops, nobody's there again. And we, we have, and yet we pay money to keep those up. There are several of them where they're next to very little usage. And now, we're going to buy more, plus it costs us, I would say now, this is a couple directors ago, it was a thousand dollars a mile to keep up the trails. And yet, we don't charge a user fee for them or anything. And, and then we want to add more of those yet. And so, I, I think this million dollars for purchasing more, that should be pulled out of there before I would support it. And plus, I'm really, really also leery about purchasing new land for the, for the jail. That really bothers me because it seems to me this is going to be rubber stamped, just like when we have a preliminary levy in September, come December, and, and it's always projected, well, it could go down, but come December, it just gets rubber stamped. And, and that's where I'm afraid this is all going to go. So, I, as, as this capital improvement overall thing stands right now, I cannot support that.
Yeah, and I had the same concerns, but, you know, in discussing with Ben from Parks, you know, and others, basically, it's putting it out there, but it's not saying it's going to happen. I mean, we, we still would have to vote on these things as, as they would, you know, come to the top of the list. So, I, I had those same concerns, but I'm okay including them in there because it's kind of like pre-planning, but we still, you know, or the county board, when it comes forward, still has the right to say yes or no. And the same with the budgeting process. I mean, we, administration, you know, goes through it, but I think part of our duty too is to take a look at it and if we have ideas on, you know, thoughts that maybe they didn't think of, I think we need to bring them forward as well.
Carol?
And, and I, I share some similar concerns. I, after talking with staff, I feel comfortable with where we're at right now and it, it gives us some flexibility and opportunities. Before we do our very biggest item in this plan, I think there's got to be a lot of community input, a lot of thought about what we're really doing, frankly, how we're leveraging some of the great things we're doing that are preventing some people from ending up in, in the, the jail, which is great. So, I, I'm looking forward to that longer conversation, but I will say that I, I bring, I've been asking people pretty frequently about that because there's some pretty big items in here and I, I for one, don't believe I'm rubber stamping.
I lost my train here.
I'll just comment then, Jeff, about the jail. And, and that's something I need, and I think we very much are, are taking quite serious because when we make a major investment like that and with the real estate in relation to the city, both the city of St. Cloud and, and private property, is we got to make sure that we make wise decisions and that, you know, again, we do not underbuild so that we're coming back 10 years later and saying, okay, we've got to do it again. And we know that unfortunately, the jail is crowded. We need to do some type of expansion and, and that's just the nature that we're at. And we're doing some things on the other end maybe to reduce, you know, our need to keep folks there as well. So, we need to have good planning behind the jail, there's no question about that.
I got it back. I think what some people seem to fail to understand here is that every time you take something off of the county taxpaying rolls, it costs you more money and there's less people paying for it. So, it's a double whammy. And, and that's, you know, further just death by a thousand cuts to our taxpayers. It just continues.
Okay. Lee?
I think it would be appropriate, we do our, what is it, our annual retreat out the historical society, is that March it comes up? That'd be a great time for a philosophical discussion because I've been taking notes all along here in terms of how we got to this point and the cruel and unusual punishment to unload on you folks all at once here. There's other public bodies where individual members do that damn near every meeting and it's not the way to get the job done. But if we could do that, Dr. Willie, make a mental note, don't lose your notes and let's make that an item here.
And I applaud you for your restraint.
Well, it doesn't happen often.
I know.
Shall we let the director?
And keep your notes, Lee.
Yeah, please do keep your notes.
He sees my notes here. I'm usually of the excess's best school of economic theory.
Okay. We're taking one at a time, so we got the capital improvement plan. Any more discussion on that, the draft on the capital improvement plan?
Just for clarification, it's a fluid plan. It's not, we're not setting this in stone right now.
Agree. Then I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Dave?
Okay. The next one, we've got the other two, which one would you?
Well, it's issuing the bonds and then you could do these two together. And then part of that is advanced funding resolution to allow us to spend some money and then get reimbursed for those when we do the bond.
And this is for just what was planned for 2020, correct?
2020 and 2021. So, those two years.
All right, let's go, let's do the advanced funding for 2021, those bonds?
If you want to do the bonds and the advanced funding resolution, that would be progress.
Okay, they're tied together, all right. I'll look for the motion on that.
I'll move that.
Commissioner Lenzmeyer?
I moved it.
I know.
Okay, second.
Commissioner Clark? All right.
Anybody home?
Yep. Okay, any more discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion passes. Okay? Good. All right, well, then that concludes the public hearing on the capital improvement plan. We'll move to the next public hearing. It's considering a rezoning on the property owned by Dave Walls.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, good morning.
Good morning.
Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. Angie Berg is here with me to discuss the rezoning request that was here before and as the board, you decided to hold your own public hearing.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
In front of you today is a consideration for rezoning located in St. Wendell Township. The property is currently owned by David Walls Revocable Trust. It's 20 acres, currently zoned A40. The proposed zoning is R10, residential 10, and the property is located east of 95th Avenue and north of County Road 4, St. Wendell Township. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this rezoning request on October 17th and on a four-to-two vote, recommended to the Commissioners to deny the request. As indicated in your packet, page 87 and 88, the Planning Commission's findings are listed. I'll paraphrase those. They believe that the rezoning is not compatible with the comprehensive plan as the future land use plan shows the area for agricultural growth. The proposed rezoning is not compatible with the present zoning in the area and the LISA score is 75, which is over the 65 scoring threshold. And lastly, the township, their lack of comprehensive planning for the growth in their township is, is seemingly problematic to the Planning Commission. With that, we have some maps available to you. This is a public hearing. We did not receive anything in writing. Mr. Walls is here. He has some information he wants me to put on the screen, so I will do that. Unless there's any questions, the board can hold their hearing.
Okay. Questions for staff? Okay. Angie, I think we'll move forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll go ahead and I'll open the public hearing on the rezoning of David Walls' property. David, I think you're on.
Well, good morning to all. I appreciate your time. And first of all, I want to say I'm not related to the governor of Minnesota. I have lived at this location for 22 years and my kids were in 4H with some of the other neighbors. We rode the same bus together. They were not only neighbors, but they were also friends. But 10 years later, I have to come up with a new plan, a new exiting plan because I no longer need the five-bedroom house and all the work that's, takes to maintain the property. So, on February 5th, I went to the St. Wendell meeting and my original plan was to request four or five-acre lots, which Plan Zoning of St. Wendell did approve, but the township did not. They did approve an R10. It's not exactly what I wanted, so then I went and talked to some of my closest neighbors and the majority of them were okay with the two 10-acre lots. Then, on the October 17th, Plan and Zoning, I vaguely got to even speak and it was pretty much determined that they were going to deny it because I am in a limited growth area and the LISA score was higher than the threshold of 65. If you could now show the two drawings or the two sketch, uh, aerial views. So, if you look at the aerial view of the west 20, it's obvious like that the northern part, which is 3.18 acres, is pasture land. And then the west border and the south border, when you look at their planning, if you could show the other plan, please. When they do their calculations on the LISA score, they go from center lines of highways, including ditches and wetlands. And then I find out that the software they use is back in the 70s and 80s and the test results is how they come up with the LISA score. So, I'm strongly convinced that if the updated software would have been more current, my score would have been at the threshold of 65 or less. So, then you look at the other landowners in my surrounding area, which are on the east, four 10-acre lots. On the north, down 95th Avenue, 80% of the landowners are residential lots. So, then if you look at the half-mile radius plan, out of the... Do you have that one?
This?
Well, this one here.
Oh, thank you. Yes.
If you look at the half-mile radius plan, out of the 46 property owners, 28 are residential properties. So, I believe my request is compatible with the surrounding area. But then, the line in the sand is County Road 2, so anything west of 2 is an unlimited growth, which in my foreign brain, the line should have been at 95th Avenue, which borders the west property line of the Sartell School District, which my land would be part of. And not only by rezoning this property to an R10, it would 25 times the tax rates for the school district and the county from what I pay now. So, my request, and then when you find out east of County Road 2, that the landowners are able to develop and split their land down to as small as seven-acre lots. But yet, the county would take my 20 acres and I could approve a solar garden, but I'm at the gateway of 95th Avenue and I don't think my neighbors would appreciate a solar farm at the entrance of their properties. So, I do have a signed petition. I went to a majority of my landowners and I have out of the, I have 26 signed people that say they have no problem with it. And the majority of them said, it's your property, you should be able to do whatever you would like to do. So, my plan is, my exiting plan, like in a business, is to come up with a plan to stay in the same area because it's close to St. Cloud, but not have all the maintenance and the upkeep of what I have now. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Steve? Can I just ask a question? The, it appears that the 40 to the west of you is all farmland. Have they also been okay with you?
Uh, the, uh, no, the Chuck and Jeanie Ammon land would not sign my petition. And at the Plan Zoning, Dave Mansumer did mention something, but he's okay with it right now, but he would not also sign the petition.
Okay, thanks. Board members, are there questions to David? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak at a public hearing on the rezoning of this property?
I will.
Okay. Just state your name and address.
Oh, absolutely.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Dwayne Saponiac, 35002 95th Avenue North. Okay, you look at all the property around there, the major farm properties that are in existence out there right now is Ray Fidler, Jerry Notch, and myself. And I don't consider myself a large farm, but I butt up to Dave and all this other stuff, which is fine. And to me, I think that.
Dwayne, can I ask, which property is yours? Dwayne, can I ask which property is yours?
My property is...
On the map there?
Are you here?
No, he's on 95th.
Yeah, go for it. I don't know where you are.
I'm here and I'm up this and this here. So these two big squares.
Oh, okay, good, thanks.
So again, there's where I am. And Ray Fidler is to the north of me and he's got like 360 acres. Jerry Notch has got like 264 or something like that. So, and I'm with like 150, so I'm the small pea in the pod. But as you can see, as the big farmers in that area, the three of us, we all signed Dave's petition. You know, we don't think it should be wrong for him to scale down in his life at this age to build a nice piece, a nice home on the property he's had for the last 20-some years. You know, he's been there, he's been, he's been a great neighbor, you know, and to me, I see there's no, should be no problem whatsoever. According to the picture for his land, I think they never took in consideration the pasture where the cow overpass is under the road there. That's non-tillable land. You can't do nothing with that. I've farmed that land for like 30 years and it's not the primest piece of farmland that's out there. I mean, if you like to pick rocks, that's a great place to start. And that's all I have. My two cents worth. Thank you.
Thanks for your two cents, Dwayne. Anyone else wishing to speak at the public hearing? Anyone else? Last chance. Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Did we have any additional written testimony? We had the petition, I believe, correct?
Correct. That's, that's all we have.
Okay. Okay, board members, questions or discussion? Go ahead.
I think what he's asking for is reasonable.
I will just say it was defeated at, his request was defeated at the Planning Commission. Angie, was it six to two or five to two? What was it?
Mr. Chair was four to two and one member was absent from the meeting.
Okay, it was, yeah, okay, it was four to two. And I guess this, you know, relates very similar to what we saw at, on the St. Anna properties. But we, you know, we went ahead and we denied the development of the St. Anna properties because we didn't want to see the continued growth that happens there. If we go back to the picture we had just previously, the one that's being shown right now. There was one other.
This one?
Yeah, this one. You know, we take a look at the size of those parcels and we do have the rule about the A40. And I mean, are we just going to continue to split it up like that? We are in the position of our comprehensive plan about making changes on that and changing that growth areas. I very much understand his frustration because again, right down the road, there's that new development we approved last year on those small parcels, just on the other side of County Road 2. But yet, we, I look at us making a long-range plan and also consistency on from what we've done before. So it's a rather difficult question as far as, you know, where we're going in the future unless we have a policy we're going to stay with. Lee?
Well, let's get this party started.
Okay.
I'd move approval. A second.
I got a motion and a second to move approval.
I just also want to make a point that St. Wendell Township did approve this and they are the people that are closest to the situation.
Daryl?
Two questions for staff and one relate to things each of you brought up. Can you talk a little bit about St. Wendell? Here they're approving it or they've, they recommended approving. Where are they at with their future plans or what, whatever you can let us know in terms of what's been happening with land use around there? And this is partially for the public and partially for me. And then the other is as it relates to where we're at with our comprehensive planning process and any impact on that.
Okay, sure. So I did attend a St. Wendell Township meeting about a month ago and I met with them to talk about our comprehensive plan process. And knowing that we've had a lot of rezonings in the last five to seven years and it's been difficulty, you know, working through those, I went to try to understand what are they, under what criteria are they approving and denying certain rezonings? So, and as Mr. Walls would attest to, this is the area he was speaking about. They call that their sewer service area. So within this area, they would allow for lots that are less than 10 acres in size. Outside of that area, they want to stay with 10-acre lots. So I created this map, which maybe we could zoom out a little bit. And I wrote on here all the different requests that you have seen in the last eight years. And so there's a bit of a patchwork with some of the rezonings that have been approved. Here's Mr. Walls' property right here. Here's the sewer service area. And so I wasn't able to leave that meeting with a different understanding of what they would like to see. I pushed them for, do you want to have R10 in your whole township? Is that where we're going in St. Wendell? We're on that growth area. They weren't ready for that. We will meet with them again. Perhaps Mr. or Commissioner Persky can attend as his district and help me with that. So as it relates, that's what I know about St. Wendell Township right now. They do have difficulty making it to these meetings because they all work. So we talked about that as well. In terms of your second question, Commissioner Clark and Shelley and I were discussing that before the meeting. We are undergoing our comprehensive plan update. How, how this rezoning would be looked at under the new lens of the comprehensive plan will be up to the commissioners. We're going to be presenting some new information at the next steering committee meeting on Monday. It's called the Decision Tree and it's going to factor in different parts of your policy and ordinance discussion on looking at these particular requests. So it's basically going to determine on how, what kind of process are you going to look at? And would you change this decision or not? I guess time will tell on that.
Just real quick follow-up on that. From the township's input, have they indicated from their own planning? This is, we're hoping that opportunity for the townships is to help us see what they're looking at doing in terms of growth and what they're looking at doing. So about their, their feedback and given their recommendations, are they looking as part of that as growing the area that they're going to do, look at sewer and water?
Mr. Chair, we didn't, we didn't get into that discussion. That would be a discussion we would need to have with City of St. Joe and or Sartell. We didn't get into that discussion. They were, they're very much property rights oriented in terms of an application comes in front of them and if it's, the time is right, then they think, then they will approve the recommendation for rezoning. Aside from that, we, certainly an outcome of a comp plan could be looking at encouraging the city and the township to look at sewer ability. That typically wouldn't be a role the county would play, but we can encourage that.
I guess I was just thinking, it sounds like they've got kind of, at times, potentially conflicting desires. And they're both understandable, the specific area that they're looking at for the stated reasons, but also wanting to approve if a property comes in front of, or recommend if a property comes in front of. Okay, thank you.
So, you know, back in, what was it, 2000 when the first comp plan and then all the townships had to designate A40s? You know, will, will something like that occur again with, is that the intent to, to allow all the townships to relook at their A40s, their R10s?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Notch, so after the comprehensive plan is adopted and the future land use policy map is unveiled, we'll talk about that again on Monday at our steering committee meeting. Townships would definitely have an opportunity to approach the county and say, based on the comprehensive plan, here's now what we would like to see in these particular areas. I think we had Oak Township a few years ago want to go from A80 to A40. And we've seen some of those, but there won't be a concerted, we're not going to go A to Z and work with each township on rezoning. It will be basically there upon their request.
Okay, thanks.
Any more discussion?
I call a question.
Okay. Okay.
This is dead.
Okay. All those in favor of supporting the rezonings, rezoning, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Was it four to one?
You were the only name.
I would guess I'm the only name. And I, and I'll clarify that. I talked to David in the hallway even before the meeting. I, I need to see some consistency, you know, in our process here. And we've had, things come before as before, the St. Anna property, the restaurant. We asked them to wait for the comprehensive plan and I think we should have maybe waited here. But David, I want to wish you luck on that. That's, it's a nice piece of property. I'd like to buy the whole 40 myself. If it's for sale, David, all right.
I'll throw a couple of horses in.
I don't eat horses.
I didn't eat it.
All right. We'll move on. Public Works, I believe, we're on for next.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have two quick items for you today. Jody Tyke, county engineer. My items start on page 110 of your agenda packets. My first item is just that I am asking the board to authorize our county agricultural inspector to apply for a noxious weed and invasive plant grant. The only cost to the county for this grant, if we were awarded it, would be administration of those funds. The proceeds go to municipalities and private property owners within the county to address those noxious weed issues throughout the county. We've gotten this grant in the past, but this is the first time the Department of Agriculture wants on the record that the county board authorizes applying for the grant. So I am asking the board, so that it is reflected in the minutes, to authorize our application.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second on the weed grant? Any discussion on that? I would...
I think we're against noxious weeds.
I would think so too. I don't think we need that in our comp plan.
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
My next item is I'm asking the board to approve execution of a quitclaim deed, transferring some right-of-way along Trunk Highway 15 to the Minnesota Department of Transportation. When we did the 33rd Street South, Highway 15 interchange a few years ago, the county purchased all of the right-of-way on the west side of Highway 15. So we'd like to turn that right-of-way back over to the state. It was part of our original cooperative construction agreement. One thing I do want to note, the map on page 117, we've got the entire parcel being turned over to the state outlined in black. You will notice that north of that 33rd Street South or Cassa 84 corridor, there is a small parcel that we did attempt to sell in the past via sealed bid. And as you're aware, we cannot sell something for less than 90% of the market value as determined by the assessor. We've gotten no bids. When people have called in the past and I've told them what that 90% property value was, we've gotten no interest. So I do want you to be aware, so there are no surprises, because I know at least one of you has gotten a couple of questions and comments on this before. That's included in this. So rather than us going through the subdivision process to divide up that parcel, we were going to turn it over to MINDOT as right-of-way. So I did want to point that out, so there would be no surprises. So what I am asking to do is to authorize execution of the quitclaim deed and then to adopt the resolution that's found on page 115 of your agenda packets. And this is a standard requirement for any MINDOT agreement, quitclaim deed, warranty deed, anything they typically have an accompanying corresponding resolution.
Questions or comments about that? Jody, I did notice, we do have that farm building real close to that roundabout there.
Yes.
That's on private property?
Yes. As part of the right-of-way process, by statute, property owners from whom we buy, completely buy out the parcel, they have the right of first refusal if we want to sell the remnant. And when we wanted to sell that remnant, it's the Hartneck property. Margie Hartneck did exercise that right of first refusal and she purchased the property back.
Okay. Because it's rather relatively close to the road?
Correct.
And I was just curious if that structure was going to stay there? And then also if it did belong to the state, it was just there for aesthetic purposes? It doesn't look bad. I mean, it's attractive, a little building, but...
It is private property.
Okay.
Okay, so now, we can't sell it for less than 90% of the assessed value by law, correct?
Correct, to a private individual.
To private. Okay, so now this gets turned over to the state. So these, anybody that would wish to purchase it would now have to negotiate with the state, is it?
I believe if the state were willing to get rid of some of it, I don't know that they would be willing to because it would be such a small parcel. Obviously, generally speaking, we all know there would only be one property owner interested in it. And so I believe MINDOT has similar rules. But I can't guarantee that I've not researched those statutes.
So they are necessarily more favorable to the person that would like to purchase them? Okay, thank you.
And I forgot, what are the exceptions?
Exceptions to...
That 90%?
I believe if we are, we can transfer it, like in this case, it's, we purchased it for the purpose of right-of-way and it was part of that cooperative construction agreement, so we can transfer to that entity who owns the road. So that, I believe, is an exception. I think that you can take real estate fees out of that 90%. So let's say we were having trouble selling, it had to hire a broker or a real estate agent. Their fees can be taken out of that, so we would actually take less than 90% in. But it's when we own the property outright. And in this case, we bought everything in fee.
All right, so I'm looking for a motion.
Short of getting a 90%, an offer for 90%, is there any other way that we can dispose of the property? My point is, is that if we get an opportunity like this to convey this to a private property owner, put her on the tax rolls?
Oh, absolutely.
How could we do that?
Marcus Miller, when he was with the county, he and I searched the statutes for options that we would have to dispose of some of our excess right-of-way. Because obviously, if we don't need that vast amount, it's much more valuable on the tax rolls. And we found very few exceptions. One of them, like I said, it was purchased for the purpose of right-of-way, so we can transfer it as right-of-way to another government agency.
So your short answer is no?
Well, minimal. Minimal exceptions.
I understand, no.
Sounds like in terms of what we might like to do, the answer is no.
Jody, with that, was the piece of property actually marketed very well? I mean, is it, is there somebody that potentially could use it and what?
We looked at, there were potentially basically two potential buyers. One would be a billboard company, may want that small parcel. If they can, within the zoning of that area, be able to put up a billboard because of the visibility to Highway 15, we would have to reserve the right to limit how they access that property certainly. Then the surrounding property owner to expand the amount of property that they have. So I mean, those are really the two only interested parties aside from for right-of-way purposes.
All right, well, I'll look for a motion to execute the quitclaim deed.
So move.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Mergan. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
I have no miscellaneous unless anybody has anything for me.
Mr. Chair, I believe just quickly, there's an award that you could talk about, very quickly.
County Highway Department did receive a merit award for, or an award for the paving, the botuminous paving on our County Road 75 resurfacing project that impacted so many people for so long. So we did get a botuminous paving award. Two of our staff are going to be going to an awards luncheon in the beginning of December to receive that on behalf of the county, so.
Congratulations.
A good thing, yeah. Thank you, yeah. Jody, I did have a question. A couple of people approached me about the roundabout, potentially up at County Road 1 and 2 and the Rice Bridge.
And so just to be clear, we do identify that as intersection improvements right now. We have talked about the potential for a roundabout. And that, the roundabout, if we would go that direction, or the main intersection improvements would be at County Road 1 coming from the Rice Bridge, County Road 1 going to the north. And then County Road 17 comes in from the west as well. County Road 2 is a little bit south, but we do want to make some safety improvements to that intersection because it's a wide-open intersection. People often blow that stop sign because they think they can see and so we'd like to bring that in at more of a right angle. Right now, again, identified as intersection improvements, we would have a public meeting because it's slated for 2021 construction. We'd have a public inputs meeting, open house style, probably sometime early to mid 2020.
Sounds good. All right, thank you. Commissioner Lenzmeyer, your pencils out?
Yeah. The intersection in Linden Township, that's located by the town hall. The adjacent, what happened is in a very recent past, put up two streetlights at that intersection and... happened is in a very recent past, put up two streetlights at that intersection and turned them on within the last week. And it's remarkable how much light they put out. And we're getting complaints from two adjacent property owners about how bright they are to the point of distraction. Is there a way, a couple ideas I had on that, is there a way that we can make the lights directional, so they shine away from the house but on the edge of the right-of-way? Or is there a way that we can put in bulbs that don't have the, what do you call them? Lumens? You're in the electrical business. Anyway, stuff that isn't so bright but does the job. The property owner called me, and I promised him we'd talk about this here.
I did talk to one of the adjacent property owners, I'm not sure if it was the same one, but I did talk to him last Friday. And so we are at the point where we're investigating what our options are there. You certainly don't want to dim them so much that it eliminates the benefit of putting them up in the first place to draw people's attention to that intersection. I realize, aside from the town hall lights, it's generally a dark area, so any amount of light would be helpful. And so we are looking into some options. I told him I would give him a call by the end of this week, and I can follow up with you, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, as well.
Well, your two extremes are what it was, and sunlight. So I think somewhere in between there. So if you can, if you can make that happen, it'd be great.
Anything else? Thanks, Jody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody.
Okay, we're going to move on to parks. Ben?
Good morning, Ben.
Good morning, commissioners. Ben Anderson, Stearns County Parks Director. I have two items on the agenda for you today. The first is a request to adopt a resolution to apply for regional designation of Mississippi River County Park. In the past, there have been changes regarding to how local units of government are eligible for grant funding for parks and trail projects through the Minnesota DNR Legacy Grant Program. These changes include any park or trail project in which you hope to even apply for legacy grant assistance, they must first be designated as regionally significant. We have applied for Mississippi in the past, in 2015, and was denied at that time to be designated as regionally significant. And really, what happens is without this designation of being regionally significant, you're just not eligible for these dollars that are out there. So what we're proposing is to put in a designation application that includes Stearns County and Benton County. Stearns County would be the lead applicant, Benton County would be the joint applicant. Benton County has applied with Benton River Regional Park, which is directly across the river from Mississippi River County Park, and they were also denied. After talking with the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission, it was suggested that maybe we should do a joint application, because we are preserving both sides of the river through there from future development in an area of the river that doesn't have any such protection within that area. And essentially, what we would call this project would be the Great River Park Complex. And this applying together would certainly increase our likelihood of becoming designated and being eligible for those funds in the future. So with that, I'd take any questions.
Questions for Ben? If not, I just want to comment, of course, we also have the Nicholson Isle Life Management Areas, which is on the east side of the river, on the Benton side. And then, of course, we have the broker property that's north of that park, which, you know, we're looking seriously as a parcel that's desirable, which would, if we can preserve, that would be nearly a two-mile stretch of the Mississippi River that would be protected for quite a long time, which could be a very good thing. Is it, I believe, north, is it of the Rice Bridge or the Blanchard Dam? It's all considered natural area on the Mississippi there?
I believe so.
And there's protections on there, there. So this could be one of the last stretches then of undeserved property along the Mississippi. So quite an asset to be preserved, so. But we need to step forward as far as regional parks, so.
So moved.
Commissioner Noch with the second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion passes.
Thank you. The second item I have on the agenda is a request to authorize a public hearing to consider amendments to ordinance number five-twenty-four and number five-twenty-five, the ordinance regulating county parks and recreational trails. Ordinance numbers five-twenty-four and five-twenty-five were adopted in March of 2016. Revisions to the county parks and trail ordinances include, but are not limited to, are proposed revisions. General document formatting, make the language consistent between the two ordinances, broaden the language to include similar devices when talking about tobacco and e-cigarette products, broaden the non-motorized vehicle category, and adjust the speed limit for all trails. The most notable change, or proposed change, is removing the restriction on studs slash metal traction devices on bituminous recreational trails.
Questions for Ben?
Where did that come from? I'm old enough, I remember when studs were legal on roadways, but they were outlawed because of the damage that they do to the pavement on roadways.
So it was about five years ago when the DNR actually lifted the stud restriction on all state trails. So essentially, with our Wobegon Trail having fifty-seven miles in length, we're creating a fifty-seven mile gap in the Grant and Aid Trail for those users that have studs on the trail. And when in talking with the DNR, with the local office here, they haven't seen any increased maintenance or loss of life in the trail surface after they have lifted it. Granted, it's only been five years, but...
That was my next question.
And I'd like to comment about that, too, Jeff. I think ninety-eight percent of the trails, though, in the state of Minnesota are non-asphalt or are regular trails. So there's only two percent that are asphalt. Also, we have had considerable money put into maintenance onto that Wobegon Trail, and we will continue to have that maintenance. I guess I would be reluctant to go ahead and just lift it without being able to monitor it and call it back, because also, from testimony from snowmobilers, Ben, was it less than a quarter of the people do have studs on there?
Right. I mean, tracks are getting, are way better than they used to be. And so less and less people are putting studs on their track, is my understanding.
Right. And so I don't know about opening that up, especially when we have marginal winters and then putting studs by a few individuals that want to go ahead and try to snowmobile on some asphalt, so.
I'm basing this on advertising, I see. And it looks like, I would guess from that, that the popularity of snowmobiles is being slowly repaced by smaller four-wheelers and...
ATVs.
Yeah. What do you call them?
ATVs.
ATVs, Jesus. I can't believe I couldn't think of that. Anyway, you get the drift. And so the ATVs are typically...
I couldn't pronounce the word, so I just used a letter.
Oh, okay. Well, you're cheating, good. But anyway, long story short, the industry is moving relative to stud issue into a favorable direction, so it isn't the issue once could have been, in my opinion.
Okay. So, but we're looking at setting that public hearing, correct?
Right, yes. So we'd recommend that the county board set up a public hearing for the repeal and replacement of ordinance numbers five-twenty-four and five-twenty-five on December seventeenth at a time to be determined.
Okay.
All moves are set to public hearing.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Jeff, second by Steve. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion passes.
All right, I just had one other quick miscellaneous, if there's time.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to give a quick update on our disabled deer hunts that we had in Rockville and Spring Hill. We did have, two of the three hunters at Rockville were successful, each harvesting a doe this last weekend. And then unfortunately, nobody saw a deer up at Spring Hill, but they do have the muzzleloader season yet at Spring Hill, so.
All right, well, thanks, Ben. And I'll say, up at Mississippi Park, I was there yesterday, there was a fisherman out there. Yeah, breaking ice on the ramp to get his boat in, so. It's getting used even at this late in the season, so, yeah.
He's being hopeful.
Oh, boy, yeah.
Very good.
Okay, anything else for Ben? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Okay, on our agenda, it shows that we have a five-minute break. Are we in the mood for a five-minute break, Board?
Sure.
Then we will adjourn for five minutes, or break, anyway.
This was a musky figure.
Back after recess, and we'll continue our meeting with the Human Services Board. Melissa, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners, I'm Melissa Higby, the Human Services Administrator, and I have eight items on my Human Services Consent Agenda today. It's items H1 through H8, and they're on pages 135 through 157, and I'm available for questions.
Okay, we have items 1 through 8 on the Consent Agenda for Human Services. Any Commissioners want to pull any of those items for discussion or clarification? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve those items.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Notch, second by Commissioner Clark. Any discussion on those? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
All right, thank you. The regular Human Services Board item is aye one on page 158, and presenting with me are my esteemed colleagues. I have Commander Jim Steve from the St. Cloud Police Department, Dr. Lee of Central Minnesota Mental Health Center, and Dr. Ryan Ingdahl from Centra Care. And recently, you know that we've been doing a lot of collaborative efforts with all of our agencies, and we've also been recognized by a number of awards lately. Recently, we were presented with the 2019 Criminal Justice Award from NAMI Minnesota for our efforts in decriminalizing mental illness. We also received the 2019 Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation Innovation Award that was focusing on our community action team, which has been working with our active utilizers of services in the community and those who are caught up in the justice system due to mental health concerns. And then just recently, we were notified that we are receiving the Association of Minnesota Counties, the AMC County Achievement Award for similar efforts. But we've been engaged in a lot of collaborative efforts, and so we thought, why stop there? So today, we're here to provide information to you on a coresponder model, which is our next initiative, and request one-time funding of $80,000 to the Central Minnesota Mental Health Center for the hiring of a licensed mental health professional. Centra Care would also be putting in $20,000 towards that effort, and Central Minnesota Mental Health Center, $25,000 to hire a professional to be embedded in the police department. So we're going to talk about that today. So if you would help me with the PowerPoint and just... So first, I would say that collaboration works. We have been working a lot. One of the big issues we have been working on in the past year has been to address the issues of what to do with people who have mental health issues in the jails. As you know, Stearns County is a stepping-up initiative county, which is a national initiative to reduce the number of people with mental illnesses in jails. And according to the Stepping Up Initiative website, approximately 2 million times each year, people who have serious mental illnesses are admitted to jails across the nation, with almost three-quarters of those having substance use issues in addition to that. And then, once incarcerated, individuals with mental illness tend to stay longer, and upon release are at higher risk of returning to incarceration. And the human toll, as well as the cost to the taxpayer dollars, is staggering. Jails spend two to three times more money on people with unmet mental health issues and needs, and they see, and the community sees, no improvement in public safety and no improvement to overall general health. So, recently, the group that you see before you, in addition, Chief Anderson of the St. Cloud Police Department joined us, and we traveled to Colorado, and we visited both Colorado Springs and Denver. And we met and did ride-alongs with them and met with their professionals there. And we think that we can create this model here and continue to get more taxpayer dollar savings and the reduced trauma to individuals and families. So first, let me just describe what a coresponder model is, so that you know that we're all talking about the same thing. What it does is it pairs law enforcement with mental health professionals, embeds them, the mental health professional into the police department. So at the time of the 911 call, we are alerted, the police department is alerted often that it's a behavioral health call. We know at the point of the call. So this is a primary response, where the person would go out with law enforcement. And then the person, what they do is they provide onsite crisis response and crisis de-escalation and assessment, and then we do follow-up planning. And what this does is prevents unnecessary incarceration and hospitalizations of persons with mental health issues. It certainly facilitates return of law enforcement to patrol activities and also reduces risk of harm from law enforcement use of force. And then generally, the most important item is that it reduces trauma to both individuals and families. And so I will allow my colleagues to talk about some of their experience. Maybe Commander Steve, you want to start first with some of our experiences in Colorado?
Certainly. Commissioner Persky and other Commissioners, thanks for having us. It really affirmed that, one of the, some of the data analysis we started doing really back in 2016, we started looking at that frequency. And we established that community action team, it's doing great things, it's been recognized. We want to take it to the next step, and really be, instead of a secondary response, I refer to it as a primary response. All of the research that we've done has told us, the quicker we can get to these people, the more services we can get them quicker, the more sustainable outcomes that we have, and the better outcomes we have. So, in the way we talk about it, the police department, we think, in a nutshell, we, the citizens deserve to be served better, in a better way, plus we're going to save the community millions of dollars by getting to them, stopping the recidivism. Denver, a community of 740,000 people with their clinician, they have a recidivism rate of 3% of all their behavioral health calls. We have way more than that. Just to highlight another...
Might be a result of marijuana.
Yeah. And just, just the other one, and just the other one that goes along with that, the amount of holds that they had, mental health holds, were only like in the 700s for the city of Denver. We're at that or over. And they looked at our data and said, you understand what your, the current model you had is not sustainable, and we go, exactly. That's why we're here, and a collaborative approach coming there, to try to, try to serve our citizens in a different way. And what we saw there, we can definitely replicate here, and serve citizens better and save money in a dual role.
Rick Lee, Central Minnesota Mental Health Center.
Thank you to all the Commissioners for having us. This is very exciting for, for our community. Commander Steve didn't mention the numbers, but in, I think it was in 2018, St. Cloud PD had approximately 1,000 runs where they picked someone up within a mental health or chemical health crisis and brought them to the emergency room. 90% of those encounters resulted in the person being released from the emergency room. The idea of pairing a mental health professional right in the field with law enforcement is, is, to, not only to, I mean, it really is about making people's lives better. Going to the emergency room, having a mental health crisis, going to the emergency room and being released is a traumatic experience for somebody. It's often experienced as not particularly helpful. But this is about triaging and assessing immediately in the field, reducing, quite significantly, we anticipate, by the Colorado experience, needing to bring people to the emergency room at all, and ideally, only bring those people to the emergency room who are likely to need a higher level of care, that is, hospitalization. So we're reducing costs significantly to all parts of the system, but I think it's really important to keep in mind that what it's about is improving individual lives and the, and the health of our communities in doing this. In Minnesota, like in Colorado, they have what's called a mobile crisis response. Central Minnesota Mental Health Center operates the mobile crisis team in our region. For immediate needs that law enforcement encounters, mobile crisis, both in St. Cloud, in Minnesota, and in Colorado, the mobile crisis team is often not nimble enough to be able to respond in a sufficiently timely fashion to that encounter. So law enforcement is pressed to clear that scene, and right now, often, the solution is to bring them to the emergency room. The coresponder fills that gap. And I thought it was really telling when we described how it was, how it functions in Minnesota to the folks in Colorado Springs and Denver, with respect to the law enforcement relationship with mobile crisis. They said, same thing here. It's not about St. Cloud, Central Minnesota, Minnesota, it's about that model, and it really is insufficient. We live in a society now where law enforcement is the tip of the spear on all this stuff. We don't think that's ideal, but that is where we're at now. There has been significant efforts to improve law enforcement's ability to respond to mental health crises, and that's fine, but that's not really their job. It's the job of mental health professionals to do those kinds of things. So the opportunity to pair these things, to pair the mental health professional with law enforcement is an incredible opportunity. And lastly, I'll say to Commissioner Lenzmeyer, coincidentally, the reason this model exists in Colorado is marijuana. It is funded by proceeds from the marijuana tax, and it is actually a statewide effort. So our proposal now, which I'm sure Melissa will get into in a little bit more detail, is to harness the funding, to, to roll out a prototype for 2020, and in the meantime, all of us involved are going to be continuing both lobbying at the legislative level and doing fundraising efforts here locally to sustain the model over the long term.
Okay. I have a question at this point. The people coming into the emergency room, you know, under crisis, is it, are you seeing people that are not taking their medication? Are you seeing people that are abusing drugs? Or are you seeing people that are involved in violence or escaping violence? What is it that you're seeing the most? Why are these people coming in?
I, maybe Dr. Ingdahl would be, since, since he's affiliated with Centra Care in the hospital...
Okay.
So I'm Ryan Ingdahl, I'm a psychologist with Centra Care. I'm a director in the mental health section, and I think I represent behavioral health here, as well as the, the mental health ER group in the hospital. And I think the answer to your question is yes, to all of those things. I think the circumstances that people find themselves in, which result in an ER visit, is, is very broad. It could be a stressor of the day, some sort of event that sparks an issue, or it could be the building of some more chronic issue, as you're describing, stopping medications or some other change. And so there isn't a specific sort of common reason, but what we find is that people are probably having one of the worst days of their lives and need some additional support on that day, and that's when they get to us. I think to add to what Dr. Lee has said before very well, I think he took all the things that I would have wanted to speak about, are that, our current model is that when, when there's someone that we've identified, or a family member, or a loved one, or a colleague identifies someone who's at risk of hurting themselves or someone else, they call the police. And as Dr. Lee suggested, we had over 1,100 trips to the ER last year from law enforcement. The data from Colorado Springs suggested that they reduced that by 65%, because 65% of those folks were, quote, "treated in place." So when you come to the ER now, you're received by a medical team for medical clearance, and then you meet with a behavioral health team that is staffed by behavioral health nurses in the, in the ER, and they do a risk assessment or a suicide risk assessment, which then contributes to the plan for discharge to either be admitted to our unit at the hospital or back to the community. And as Dr. Lee suggested, of those 1,100 or 1,000 that come, we maybe keep 8%, 8 to 10%, because those are the folks that are clinically appropriate to stay at the hospital. So when people are having the worst day of their life, they need some time, and they need some support, and they need to have the right people there to help make a plan. And so when I look at my friend Commander Steve down there, I know he's had lots of training in apprehending bad guys and kicking indoors, but I don't think he's ever had classes in graduate mental health stuff. And so the idea is, we have the right team of people on scene in the moment to do that work there, because to Dr. Lee's point, coming to the hospital is a traumatic event in and of itself sometimes. And so if we can get that work to happen in the field, we get the right resources to the people in their homes or wherever we encounter them, we keep them out of that hospital, and we get them to the right place without that additional step, in a more sort of humane way, without a ride down to the hospital. We were able to observe, I think, in Colorado, we were lucky, because there were three different models we saw. One that was county-owned, where the mental health provider rode with the sheriff's department. The Colorado Springs Fire Department is sort of the agency that operates this program in Colorado Springs, and then in Denver, it was the Denver Police Department. And I think that we think, because of that experience, we're able to come back and take all that information and, and sort of from a foundational point, start with our law enforcement option here.
While we were in Colorado, I was able to do a ride-along, so I went out on calls, and they had the professionals all together. It was law enforcement to secure the scene, so a call comes in, we go out. Law enforcement secures the scene, sort of backs out, while a paramedic actually was onsite, did vitals and some other quick checks, and then the licensed professional was quickly in there, and we diverted a hospitalization. And, and that was a person in that case that was expressing suicidal thoughts and was a 16-year-old, and would have been a most assured straight-to-the-ER situation historically before this intervention, so. So with that, what we'd like to do is I'll have Dr. Lee talk about how we're going to do some implementation of this. What I'm requesting is some funding, which actually we have available due to underspending in Human Services, that has been in part as a result of a lot of the prevention efforts that we've been doing across the board. We have quite a few initiatives, we'll be back to the Board hopefully in December to talk about some other things that the same group is involved in, but for different purposes. But it's been underspending and prevention activities that helps us pay for this. And so if you wouldn't mind actually explaining what your plan is.
Thank you, Melissa. Happy to, I'm smiling because I'm thinking that some of that savings is coming from the reduced utilization of detox.
It is.
That's been happening with the work of the CAT team. So I, you know, ironically, Central Minnesota Mental Health Center is actively and, and eagerly actually participating in a project that is going to reduce the utilization of one of our programs and reduces revenue. But we're really pleased that, that Human Services is, is offering this opportunity, and we're certainly hopeful that the, that the Board approves it. But the, the plan would be, since the other funding is in place at the moment, that probably this week, I finalize the job description for the position, and we post. The model, which we saw in Denver and in El Paso County, Colorado, which Colorado Springs is a part of, the, the mental health professional who's embedded with law enforcement is actually an employee of their version of CMMHC, of Community Mental Health Center. And the, and the importance of that is that the Community Mental Health Center provides an array of community-based services that doesn't exist in other kinds of entities. Like Centra Care, as Ryan's group has a, Centra Care has an enormous investment in behavioral health services. And, but there's, there is types of services, assertive community treatment, adult rehabilitative mental health services, and others, that the, the Mental Health Center either exclusively or primarily provides. So with this person technically being a member of our mobile crisis team, they're then connected to, directly to all of those other services. The professional also is going to be expected to develop relationships with Centra Care and St. Cloud Hospital, and then obviously, the CAT team and St. Cloud PD and so on. But that linkage is seen as really vital to the success of this kind of project. We did, it was a little bit of a surprise to me to hear from the folks in Denver that, I mean, they have 15, I mean, it's a very large, obviously a large city, like Commander Steve said, 740,000 during the day, and another, another 200,000 to 300,000 during the, during the day when people commute into work. So it's a large city. They have 15 mental health professionals embedded in the Denver Police Department. But I was surprised to learn that they actually are able to bill Colorado's version of Medicaid for these services and funds as much as, I think it was 75%, they said, of their costs. That wasn't something we had thought about in advance, that it would be that robust. We figured there'd be some ability to, to generate some third-party revenue for that, but we will be going after that as assertively as we possibly can, which we think is a very significant part of the sustainability of the project over time. And then I'll let others comment on the outcomes.
Yes, I'll just add that there's no way this is not going to work. It just is a well-established, cutting-edge program. It's well-established that this is effective, and so we're not concerned with outcomes, although we'll be watching them closely and collecting the data over time, and if for some reason it isn't heading in the direction that we think, we would probably come up with some other plan.
If I may, Melissa?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Just, just about the, the, the data collection and measurement of outcomes, that what we found in all three of the entities when we visited Colorado was they were all incredibly gracious, providing us with their job descriptions, and also providing us, and it signaled their
involved, jail holds when the clinician's involved versus when they're not involved. Some things I think the commissioners are all interested in as well, and we think we really can make a difference in lower those jail holds when the clinician's involved. So, we make it more of a mental health call rather than a law enforcement call. Spend more time and really give those services right in place, and I think we could help with some of your jail problem by implementation of this program.
Yeah, and getting those results are sometimes difficult because you're looking at what you're not seeing opposed to what you're seeing, and oftentimes, the public doesn't appreciate that because they're not seeing it. And Commander, you know the importance of an officer in a school, and because of the amount of avoidance of issues that they provide is tremendous, and a dollar saving is tremendous, but you don't see that.
True.
So, but I can see this being very effective, but yet, the public saying, "Well, where are the results?" So, if we can get some documentation, that'd be wonderful.
Oh, yeah. So, we're available for any other questions?
Any other questions, Bob?
It's more about, I don't know if it's a question slash comment, you were talking about Denver swelling with people coming into the community. Any idea about what our numbers are like with that? Because we do have people, there are people that you are seeing every day that are not necessarily, they live in other parts of Stearns County or another county, or any idea about that?
I don't. I know our daily population, you know, I forget what the number is. Is it, I don't know, is it close to 200,000 for the day in St. Cloud, either travel through or come to work or come to use our services here? But, you know, we see some of those, maybe not the extent that maybe Denver does, but we do see, we see influx to a larger extent during the day as well.
Including on Highway 23, I'm guessing, Mr. Chair? Sorry, separate conversation.
Okay.
Correct. Okay, Lee?
This'll take a bit based on personal experience in the recent past. The, relative to your observation on the marijuana experience, the way marijuana legalization is being sold to policymakers is as a revenue generator, but as your comments have pointed out, the reality is, is the revenue that'll be generated by legalization will be more than eclipsed by additional costs that will be generated by that. But that's all I got specifically to the marijuana perspective on this. The good news is, less than 1,000 miles away, we can see a case study on that happening. Okay, recent real-world, you know, what we just got here was a 10,000-foot overview of what you're pitching, and that's great, you know, it's the policy aspect of this, yada, yada, yada. It's what we're supposed to do. I recently participated in the Citizens Police Academy, and what that is, is for the rest of you, the four local city PDs, Sartell, Sauk Rapids, St. Cloud, and Wade Park, have a class that met for five hours on Thursday nights for eight consecutive weeks, and what it did is it went through common police procedures, simulations, the training aspects of it, things that have been tried. I mean, it covered a lot of territory. The only thing that it didn't cover that I wish it could have, because it's physically impossible, is the physical space of our, of the dispatch area is just too damn small to get a group of 30 people in there to watch what these people do, what our dispatch people do. I mean, they take multitasking to a whole new level, which is phenomenal to watch them. But Tad Heschen, he's a son of a retired Stearns deputy, Tad did a really nice job coordinating that and appreciating police humor like I do. It was Tad's first year, and all of this was cut, wrapped, and frozen before he got there, so to be effusive in my praise for what he did there could also be used against him, so I won't go much farther there. Here's what happened. Part of that academy was a ride-along. In my ride-along was in the evening, a rainy, crappy, cold evening, but I was riding with a young man. God, he had an Irish last name and he fit the classic Irish cop image, you know, husky fellow, young, and with the appropriate sense of humor for law enforcement. Here was the call we went on. We got called to, we, he got called to the 10th floor of the Empire Apartments, which are just across the street over here, and, you know, in street parlance, this lady up there was flipping out. And he did, he, to the extent possible, he and another officer attempted some, let's call it sidewalk remediation to see if they could calm her down, and that didn't seem to be working. There had been prior, apparently at least one prior contact with this individual, maybe more, they were unsuccessful in diffusing the situation and resulted in taking her into the emergency room, which made it worse. Apparently had, she had apparently had this experience before, and the way that, and, you know, I was a prison guard four and a half years, this is the way we'd have handled it back in the day, that was the 70s, was to put her in a, in essence, a padded cell in the emergency area of the hospital, and essentially wait for her to become physically worn out and tired, and then proceed from there. My, I won't, you get, I think I've given you enough detail so you appreciate what I experienced. How would that situation and what you're proposing, because this is a street-level example, what you gave us was the theory, how would that street example be different with what you're proposing?
Any one of us?
Let me start out. Let me start out. So, envision a clinician with an officer, and they go, and the officer just makes the scene safe with our new proposal. That officer's not worrying about how many other calls are waiting in their beat for service, so the clock is not really ticking. So, what we're saying organizationally from the police department is that spend a little bit more time, have somebody with a master's level mental health clinician there to help whatever, talk with the lady, and so, if you can't get there, let's say that person, the clinician can't even get there. You have one officer there, not two, right? The other officer's back on the street doing what they need to do to help protect the public, one officer with the clinician, and say that doesn't work. Well, maybe then we wait and bring mobile crisis into the scene. Normally, what happens in the community, and Dr. Lee knows this, the officer, because the amount of calls that are holding, don't have time to wait for mobile crisis to get there. Could be up to an hour. This unit dedicated would have time to wait. We might use instead of the ER, even if we have to go someplace, our mobile crisis still can do it. Maybe we use the mental health center to go there as a little respite area. The evaluation is done. What do we have to do? Sometimes, there's going to be that 7, 8% that we already talked to, has to be, has to go to the ER, but you know what? We're going to get that 92% that doesn't have to be there, either provide services in place, utilize mobile crisis, maybe use the mobile mental health center as options, maybe have a family member, spend the time and maybe see if there's somebody around that maybe can come and stay with the person until they're stable. But look at other resources other than that, just the two officers ago on there, Commissioner, and knowing that those officers are knowing in the back of their mind, "I've got two or three or maybe four more calls holding." We have to make things happen, and when we have to make things happen, oh, good things don't always happen. Going to the ER maybe wasn't the best route. It's the only route we had at the time.
That's right.
We're looking at, we're looking at different outcomes that we can use, so we don't have to put holds on people, deprive them of their civil liberties, and hold their dignity, and hopefully, better outcomes will result of it.
And I would just add, we're doing the follow-up planning onsite. This person would be doing the follow-up planning, knows all the resources in the community, so it would be individualized to the person. Under normal circumstances, we already know by the data that 92% go straight to, or 100% might have gone to the ER, and 92% get discharged with no services. They're literally two hours later, right back in their home, exactly where they were two hours prior.
I wouldn't want to create the impression that we think that every single situation is going to be able to be successfully handled with this model. There are going to be cases like the one you described, Commissioner, that that may be the best outcome that could be achieved. But the mental health professional brings skills and experience. We're not, we're not going to be recruiting for or hiring a rookie mental health professional. Needs someone with experience, who's seen a few things, but they do bring a different skill set to the crisis situation than law enforcement does. But it's, I want to be crystal clear that it's, there's going to be 5 to 10% of those cases that we're not going to be able to achieve a different outcome than what we're already giving, getting, but we think the, we think the odds are with us on this one that we're going to be able to make a really very significant impact in most of the cases. Carol?
I was just thinking, as you were talking, it sounds like we have an opportunity perhaps flip the numbers, right? Even if we got halfway there to start, that would make a big difference for the people and their families, as well as resources, because we've obviously seen that on other ways. I think in addition to what you were talking about with having a trained, experienced mental health professional able to deal with what's in front, is that whole planning piece. So many times, I'm sure others get this, people don't know what resources are available, or how do they access it, and it's going to be just too much, and so, I think it's going to be interesting to see as we go along. Obviously, about outcomes, but we might be seeing some rate sizing of what services people are utilizing as well.
Okay.
We, again, that's, I think we've lowered the altitude. What we first got was 10,000-foot observation, now we're down to 5,000 feet, and the rest of the story is, it's great that you have these folks available for these situations. Anyone, I think, can appreciate to have these folks available 24/7, 365 will be expensive. I mean, obviously, you're talking about more than one staffer. Can you model the so-called peak times when this individual would be needed, based on the Denver experience and also the local, you know, combined with the local experience of the local PD, so that this is staff in anticipation of when these calls typically happen, because over time, you know, for example, they're going to be, in my opinion, more often happening in the evening as opposed to, you know, 8:00 AM. How do you, from a practical perspective, how do you handle that?
Good question, Commissioner Persky, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. We look at that. At our staffing meetings, at the PD staffing meetings every Monday, our operational staffing meetings, we look at where the most, we're having most of the behavioral health calls, and surprisingly enough, our times are almost, we shared with Denver, we're the same as Denver, we're the same as Colorado Springs, about 10:00 AM to about 8:00 PM. After that, they slide off. So, we will fit our clinician hours is what we're believing right now during those times where our high frequency is occurring, because we watch it. We watch it daily, we watch it weekly, we watch it monthly, and it's pretty much consistent. Our high-peak times are 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
And that's our experience with the crisis phone line. The activity of that phone line drops off precipitously after 10:00 PM. It doesn't start picking up until mid-morning. And just to be clear, our prototype that we're rolling out, we're actually resisting the temptation to call it a pilot. This isn't practice. We know that this model works. So, it's a rollout of prototype. It is just one FTE.
Yeah.
So, it's not only not 24/7, 365, it's more like 10 hours a day, 45 weeks of the year, five days a week, 45 weeks of the year. And again, our idea about it is, because we fully expect to get good results, there really isn't reason to expect that we won't, but that becomes the story that we tell when we go other places to see about expansion of the model. There are other local police departments that are eagerly, eagerly looking at this and seeing how it might work for them as well.
As well as the sheriff's department. Sheriff and I have also communicated about this. They don't have as many calls, but looking to expand, sorry.
And we are going to the Capitol next Tuesday to, like the same pitch to our, to all the legislature. Senator Howe is convening a group for us to present down there on Tuesday. So, it's really to spark the idea, the interest down there as well, to see if there's any help that they could provide back with us, and not only to support our program, but also the expansion to the sheriff's office and other areas, law enforcement offices or areas.
And the only additional comment I'd have, you talked about this, being a master's level professional. As I get older, the greater appreciation I have for street wisdom, and I would hope that the masters would not be a criteria solely for this person to come on board. Certainly, you want them to have some training in the area, but also some, you know, real-life experience in dealing with situations like this, so don't make that the limiting factor. I mean, you know, my sister, my older sister is dead now, but she was an emergency room nurse for 22 years and had a dim view of highly educated psycho professionals. So, I guess Renee, you're rubbing off on them, but anyway, yeah. Whoever you bring on board or whoever you put in that position, I want them to have some real-world experience is my point, and I won't be making the hiring decision per se, but please hold that thought.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, that point is well-taken. We need to hire the master's level simply for the revenue stream. That's how you access Medicaid funds, but in addition to that, we, one thing we know in this group is that it's really important to hire right and have the right people in the right position. So, you're exactly right on.
And it's not just the ability to pull down revenue, it's also legal authority.
Yes.
A person who is licensed to practice as a professional counselor or a marriage and family therapist or a psychologist really is required for the position.
And I'm sure that when I see those requirements, I'm a commercial real estate appraiser, and I have seen those requirements. Be a wonderful tool to guarantee job security, so it may be a facetious observation, but true.
We don't, in my experience, I've been hiring mental health professionals for a long time, and street smarts and being highly educated are not necessarily correlated. They often occur in the same person.
Yeah.
Good point.
Okay. So, are we finished with the presentation?
Yes.
Mr. Lenzmeyer, are you finished?
Oh, the next item on the, it's even worse.
So we're, we're gonna go ahead, we're gonna look for a motion to approve the funding for that mental health care person. We have a motion, Commissioner Clark?
I'll second it. I'm, you know, dubious, but optimistic.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on the topic? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And congratulations on all those awards and appreciate the efforts. And again, uh, I appreciate the fact that, you know, long-range, we're gonna see hopefully results and also savings for the, the taxpayers as well, so.
You know, Ms., Mr. Stevie, I'll leave it up to you to determine the appropriate level of interaction with Tad on his efforts and the, uh, and the, uh, police, uh, training he gave us.
Yes. Um, thank you. I do have one quick other announcement that's not related to this, but I just wanted to recognize Renee Fraundeans. She, um, is receiving on Thursday this week the 2019 Barbara O'Grady Public Health Nurse Award. And this is an award that is given to a public health nurse in Minnesota who has made the most, um, substantial difference in Minnesota in public health nursing and for her leadership. And, um, so on Thursday, I'll be in Duluth with her, and she'll be receiving this highly coveted award for a public health nurse. And so we're super excited. She's worked for Stearns County for over thirty-two years. I tell her longer than I've been alive, but that might not be quite true. And her contributions to public health have been second to none. So I just wanted to honor her for that. So Thursday, she'll be receiving that at the annual Local Public Health Association Award.
Nice. Yeah, I want to applaud Renee too. And I've known her probably for thirty years as well in the city of Sartell, so she's done an outstanding job. And congratulations on those other awards as well.
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. According to my schedule, it's supposed to be ten-twenty-five, and we're at administration. But so we're a little bit behind schedule. Mike, we're on it for you, I guess.
That twenty-twenty budget discussion certainly could happen at a future meeting, but if, if you feel like we've gone too late. But really, the discussion is about the funding of outside agencies. And, um, I think it really boils down to, in the last few years, uh, even, and as I propose budgets, and it's because of the board influence, um, I've been reducing those appropriations to outside agencies. And, and we did most of the social service type of agencies the first couple of years, and then the last couple of years, we've done some of that, you might term a, a little more economic development type of, of entities. And I think it boiled, what, what boils down to is I've, I've had some suggestions that rather than reduce funding to those that are, that are, um, located in St. Cloud and appear to be a little more St. Cloud area-centric, is there a way to perhaps even that out and help some agencies, uh, you know, nonprofits, type of agencies throughout the county? And I did pursue that idea a little bit, and, um, as, as I told you in one of my reports, I got, um, interesting feedback on that. Where, um, you know, there were some questions about really how would that work and why would you, you know, use county dollars to help fund, uh, some city efforts and that, and those kinds of questions. And so, um, and I was doing that as, in response to some of the board comments, um, from, from last year. And so I, I don't usually like to bring something to the board where I don't have a solution or an answer, but I'm not sure that, um, I'm able to fully interpret that unless we have a little bit of a board discussion. And if there was some, if we're just gonna continue on this current path, I think that's, of course, the board's decision. If we want to try to create a, some other type of policy or procedure or atmosphere in our funding, in our budget, I would certainly try to do that, if I had some board direction. So that's kind of the issue in a nutshell.
Is this maybe something, you know, we can look at, maybe with discussion down the road? You know, obviously, probably wouldn't work to do it at the March gathering, because it's, probably doesn't pertain to a lot of the other staff people, but...
Yeah, it is.
I was kinda wondering, this same thing.
Lee?
I would come at it from more of a philosophical standpoint. Okay, what, what's that mean, Lee? Well, uh, we are, uh, required to provide certain services. Some services we provide are also optional. I think that maybe we don't always hold in our mind the difference between providing services and seeing that services are provided. Some of the things that, uh, we think are important, perhaps we are not the best option to do ourselves. Maybe there's others that are out there. One of the things that happens, uh, when we do it ourselves is, uh, tends to perpetuate. And, uh, it, the need, perceived need continues perhaps after, uh, our involvement is required, and there are other options that become available. Y'all remember, uh, uh, the unsuccessful point that I was making, maybe a year and a half, two years ago, about the county HRA? And, uh, the, you know, the point that made to me, and I think maybe the misconception, if that's possible, that you might have had, and points I was making is that I saw that as an economic development entity, and we have other entities out there that can provide the economic development services. And Lee, you're not realizing that we, that HR, county HRA, uh, the bulk of their efforts is in housing. And the point I was making is that the HRA was created, the county HRA was created, what, twenty-five years ago? But it was there before I got here, so it's longer than that. But, uh, the, the point is, is that our smaller cities, you know, the Melroses of this world, the sock centers and so forth, the larger of them have become, have developed and become relatively sophisticated in, uh, meeting those needs. When back in the day, they didn't have the wherewithal, uh, to do that. And my point was, is that we should be pushing that down to that level. Uh, and they could do it on a contract basis, and I'll bet you they could do it cheaper than we could. But, uh, oh God, we had to have an HRA. And, uh, so I was wildly unsuccessful in making that point, but I, okay, let's back off and look at it from, uh, again, the ten-thousand-foot level. Are we necessarily, is the Stearns County as an organization, are we the best option to provide this stuff, even before that? Does it, does what we're trying to do or what's being proposed need to be provided? And if so, uh, what, who, and what is best to deliver those services? Realizing that, uh, our job is to see that services are provided as opposed to providing the services. And the example I always use is, uh, there is something called the Hennepin County Hospital. There is not something called the Stearns County Hospital. Uh, and the model we're using here seems to be working, you know, based on the most recent presentation we just got. Whereas in Hennepin County, back in the day when that was started, there was obviously a need. So is that need still there? I don't know. You look at the tremendous growth of the health organizations in the metro. To undo that now would be a horrendous task, but you get the point. I mean, I, I won't, I think the horse is dead.
Well, like, and there's one thing you said, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, is that that's really what, I mean, my conversations with these entities is, is it's, you know, we, we might have been funding you, but it's not one of our really core responsibilities. And so therefore, we're, we're, we're gonna back off that funding. That, that's really what the policy has been for the last few years, anyway. It's not a written policy, it's just interpretation and how I brought the budget, budgets forward.
That's all I got for you.
I'll just comment, you know, we do have a lot of agencies, volunteer organizations out there that do a lot of good for the people of our county. I mean, we look at even like Place of Hope, Salvation Army, Food Shelf, RSVP, you know, even we do, you know, put money into Highway twenty-three and ninety-four Coalition because that does benefit, you know, transportation and, um, you know, uh, safety. So, you know, sometimes it's difficult to say no to these organizations as well, because they, for the few dollars we do put in, we get quite a few dollars back. If we were trying to do what they do on a, a public basis, it would cost us much, much more money. So their efforts are, are very much obviously appreciated, so, you know.
So I don't think my, I, I'm not sure, um, I'm gonna have quite as in-depth breadth of what, that what Lee just said. But, uh, from, obviously, I was not part of the board when this originally started going. I've done, done a lot of work with our nonprofits as well as with the economic development entities, and, you know, kind of separating those, those two things out. Nonprofits, if we're gonna be funding them, do we look at doing something like the city had done in the past, and maybe still does, with CDBG dollars and how they look at a way that you could actually, again, leverage, to me this personally, how are we leveraging dollars? How are we participating? How do we not, um, take it on expenses that we don't need to, but still be at the table? So the nonprofit, while I'm putting that aside, uh, certainly there are, um, or bucketing that off. From a nonprofit standpoint, there could be, there's some historical reasons why we've done some funding. Certainly with some of the nonprofits, there being a connection to the county could help them leverage other resources. But we've also been working on performance measures, among other things. So what is it that we're trying to do? How, how are we, um, how, and where are we going with those? And I, I think that would be, to me, a longer conversation than we could really have, and maybe it's not the March meeting, but maybe there's a way we could do that. A, a very immediate example would be Tri-County Humane Society. We have been giving them money, but now there's contract, which is great. There's a contract. So if there was an additional, any additional money, what would that be for? RSVP, I know they care deeply about that. What are the numbers? What, what would that look like? Um, I know that Lisa Braun's been very diligent about trying to come back saying, hey, if we had this much money, it would make a difference. Well, what difference and where, what does that look like? So there's that. But on the economic development side, clearly as a county, we really are directly engaged already in many ways, in my head. Infrastructure, I mean, really, our roads, our bridges, how are we getting people and goods back and forth? What we've been trying to talk about in terms of growth ends up being together with our townships, the business community, and others makes a difference. The broadband work is huge, huge. How we're helping with water shuts, among other things. But, um, unlike a couple of our, our neighboring counties, we don't have an internal person doing specific facilitation of economic development. And I think, um, you know, kind of going back to part of your point, we, makes sense that we don't, because we have other entities that are doing that. And perhaps looking at, you know, I don't know when we've had any of them coming in and telling us what, what our value or how far out they go. I know GSDC and, uh, conversations I've had with, uh, staff say they can make a pretty good argument that they're serving the whole county. Okay, well, what does that look like? What does that mean? How, how do we, how do we know what that is? The St. Cloud Area Chamber of Commerce actually impacts four of our districts, at least. They've got a lot of other ones. So do we look at in conjunction, perhaps, with the HRA? I'm, I'm not sure, I know you've started thinking about that, but, you know, kind of putting that aside, um, what's our value? What do we get out of being at the table, both influencing the policies and what those other entities are doing in terms of their own advocacy? Seen that very directly a number of times. How are we utilizing them, if we are, for recruitment and retention, not retention, but recruitment of our own workforce needs? That is something that could be out there. But then also, how are we making sure that we're either helping positively or stopping rumor mills that are wrong about what is or isn't happening? If you're not ever at the table, um, those things kind of go off in a, in a, in a league of their own. So I'm not sure what the right numbers are. I think it really is important that we're focused on our other parts that where we make a difference in, um, the, the quality of life, the value, the attracting of our businesses. And we were talking about trails earlier and parks, that's certainly part, that's part we do. But how do, how do we leverage some smaller dollars? So for me personally, I'd be very concerned if we were gonna, and I'm, I'm not saying this is where anybody's at, go down to zero, but what, what's our value? Where are we going? What's our philosophy behind it? So, those are my two cents.
Jeff?
Okay. My issue is that there's probably, I don't know, a hundred different outside agencies, and it could be, how, how do you select which ones? And to me, the most ignored ones is I, over the years, have looked, have been those dealing with veterans. We have veteran outside agencies, and none of them have been supported here. We've got veterans outside agencies where there's no, no overhead. They, everything's volunteer. There's nobody there making a hundred thousand dollar salary a year, and, and none of those have been supported. So, you know, what do we, how do we make those choices? And, and to me, the veterans agencies, those would be number one on my list if we're gonna support any of them.
Well, that's why, at least for me, you know, the, we've, we've had this, we don't have some of the things like Highway, um, twenty-three Coalition on this, so we are treating some entities that do some lobbying different than some of the others. But, so you've got nonprofits, I would say the veterans-serving organizations as part of that. Where, where, what is it we want to do? How would you determine? That's the only reason why I brought up the CDBG and nonprofits. And then separately, because they are not the same, is the economic development memberships, if you want to call it that.
And we, and we do get played by, uh, certain nonprofits, and we'll never get away from that. You'll always get the argument where a nonprofit seems to think that they deliver a similar service, or maybe a better service in their mind than the other nonprofit, and, hey, you fund them, how come you're not funding us? After all, we're doing God's own work. And, uh, it, uh, it gets to be challenging making those choices and, uh, you know, I'm optimistic. I mean, if we, uh, to reconsider this, you aren't gonna come up with ironclad criteria for making these calls, but, uh, certainly doesn't hurt to talk about it.
Yeah. And I think the discussion here has been a little help for me is if we want to, maybe I can put together some kind of framework for, for a future discussion. I don't think we're gonna, we're not gonna come up with anything new today. Or I don't, I don't hear anybody saying that they would like to make any changes to the twenty, to the twenty-twenty budget.
Okay. All right?
I hear differently.
Yeah, the only comment I have is, it, it just seems like there's a lot of organizations that cross over into the same services. So you're creating multiple administration costs for organizations that kind of fall into the same lanes. And, and maybe that can be part of the look too, is, you know, what organizations deal with, let's say, transportation? What deal with housing? You know, make the, you know, set these up so we can take a look at them and maybe, you know, no matter what, I, I'd look at, we're kind of still in the game with them because we can provide TIF finance, you know, we can, we have resources. And I, and I get Commissioner Clark's comment too. If we're at the table, you know, we can input that right away and, and be there at the beginning. But, you know, I think this would warrant a deeper dive between nonprofits, you know, Greater St. Cloud Development, you know, all these organizations, just to filter them out and categorize them.
Agreed.
Okay. So we can one?
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we'll move on now to the last item on the agenda here. I see Randy already left and went to real work.
Great, sir.
So, Steve, I'll start with you. You have anything?
Um, yeah, I don't know if any of you got the invite. The Stearns County Four-H Recognition Banquet is Saturday, November thirtieth, and it's at Shady's Event Center in Albany. Uh, it starts at, social's at seven, seven-thirty is the banquet and meal.
Yep.
Um, they do need an RSVP by this Friday, you know, so they can get a meal count. But, um, I sit on the extension, so usually, you know, we get invited.
What's the date?
No, November thirtieth, Saturday, in Albany.
Okay.
And you can call the extension office in that number-
And you can call the extension office, and that number's 320-255-6169.
Okay.
It's usually a pretty good, nice, uh, you know, congratulatory affair for the youth of Stearns County, so.
God, those 4-H kids keep getting younger and younger.
Lee, do you have something for us?
No.
Okay, are you sure?
Oh, God.
I should give a second opportunity, Jim. Or Jeff?
I have nothing.
Okay, Carol?
I think we covered lots of things. I, it is really exciting and just want to thank staff again for the incredible work they do and seeing the reinforcement and awards that people are acknowledging, some of that good work is, is wonderful.
Mike? Okay. I just have a couple of per, public service. That is just with the weather changing, you know, be safe on the ice, be careful, especially if you try to go ice fishing. We don't need to have the Sheriff's Department out there fishing for you. Uh, hope, you know, we had deer hunting, I did not hear of any problematic issues, which is good. I hope that people fill their tags in. And Thanksgiving, and Carol, on your point, uh, I'm ve, I'm very thankful for the, the staff we have, the workers we have in the county, and I, I think we're headed, hopefully, in the right direction as we, you know, continue the process with budgets and our comp plan, so, yeah. So, with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. I'll adjourn. Second, and a second, two seconds. All of us in favor, say aye. Aye opposed, we're adjourned.
We're just gonna rearrange the room and we'll be.